Okay. I'm going to call the meeting to order and if everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, the first, uh, the third item on the agenda is, this is a carryover board of education which requires RTM approval. Result of the town of Fairfield authorized board of education in the town to, to apply for, to the commissioner administrative services to accept or reject a grant for the Burr Elementary School full roof replacement project at Burr Elementary School. And further resolve that the Burr Elementary School Building Committee is hereby established as a building committee with regard to the elementary school full roof replacement. And further resolve that the town of Fairfield hereby authorizes at least, at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Burr Elementary School roof replacement project. And Angela is going to, um, present this item. Angela?
Hello, I'm sorry, I was having a muting issue, but, um, so this, as you know, these are the standard, um, resolutions that we need in order to be qualified for state reimbursement for the roof project. Um, they're a pretty straight standard form that we, you've seen before. We actually just used similar ones for the Osborne Hill Elementary School last summer. Um, if you have any questions about them, excuse me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I'm set.
So Angela, if, if I get this correct, this first resolution is to set up the building committee. The second resolution is the charge for the building committee. And the third resolution is to appoint the special project standing committee to be the building committee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, sounds very efficient. Okay, I'm good.
Three resolutions and then they'll pull the minutes from this meeting to ask proof that they were passed.
Got it. I have no questions.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't say, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to vote as all three separate or can we do it as one?
Separate.
Okay.
That's the way they are on the agenda.
Yeah.
All right, can we go back? The next item is Burr Elementary School Roof Building Committee. Uh, to hear and consider approve a charge for the Burr Elementary School Building Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Discussion?
I, I can just tell you real quick, these are the ed specs that were approved by the Board of Education. They're the same ed specs we use for roofing projects throughout the district.
No further. Any further comment or question?
I'm good.
I am too, nothing further.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five. To hear and consider an act on following resolution is recommended by the first select woman resolved that the special project standing committee shall serve as the Burr Elementary School Building, Roof Building Committee for the purpose of performing a full roof replacement at Burr Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion or comments, questions?
None for me.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you Angela. So this, the next item is the beginning of the budget, uh, presentation on the education budget. And, uh, before I hand it over to the school administration superintendent, um, I just want to acknowledge that I appreciate the emails that I've received, uh, over those past several days from residents supporting the education budget being passed in school. And also emails that I've received, um, in favor of my proposed budget. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that I'm doing my best to, to respond to everybody. I, there have been quite a few, so I'm doing my best. And if I haven't responded yet, I will definitely get to people, uh, before the end of the week. And so I will hand this over to, uh, the superintendent and, okay.
Ms. Kupchak, I'm actually going to, um, just set the stage. Hello, everybody. It's nice to see everyone. Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Education. About a year ago, I stood before you advocating for the Board of Education budget. Days later, life as we knew it was upended by COVID-19. Without missing a beat, our school district quickly pivoted to distance learning. It continued to educate children, provides food services to those in need, and offers social emotional supports for our families. In the midst of all that work, the Board of Education continued to advocate for the 2020-2021 budget as it's made its way through the other town bodies. Appreciating the many challenges our community was facing due to the pandemic, we worked with the leadership of the Board of Finance and RTM to help identify savings realized by the building closures to help their efforts to bring a zero percent tax increase to residents while also properly providing funding the school district needed to operate. The decisions made during the last budget cycle were the right ones for our community, but they also contributed to two hundred, two million point five of necessary funding being removed from the BOE operating budget. That funding has been restored to the budget that's before you today and represents 1.39% of the proposed increase. This year, due to the rate of COVID transmission within our community, our school district has been operating on a hybrid model. Despite rising COVID numbers last fall, we did not move to extended periods of remote instruction. Our schools have remained open since day one. We are happy to report that due to the favorable downward trend and lower rate of transmission, we will be welcoming students back for full in-person learning next week while continuing to support those students who need to learn remotely. This is thanks to the tireless work of our superintendent, administrators, teachers, school staff, and health department, which has been an invaluable partner in keeping our staff and students safe. And also the support of all of the leaders of the other town boards. We appreciate your continued support through this year. As we look forward to the year ahead, there will be renewed focus on meeting the diverse needs of the whole child and hopefully what is a post-pandemic world. Our kids have shown great resiliency and responsibility this past year. They have given up a lot to help keep our community safe. Now it is time for our community to come together to restore what they have lost. Fully funding the education budget as presented is an important step in these efforts. If this last year has taught us anything, it is how important our schools are to the fiscal, social, and emotional well-being of our town. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent for, um, a budget presentation in greater detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale, and good afternoon, uh, good morning, everyone. I'm Mike Cummings, Superintendent of Schools. I'm going to, uh, I have a short, dozen or so slide presentation that I want to go through. Uh, as part of that presentation, we'll talk about, uh, the budget drivers. We'll talk about the, uh, the enhancements that we, we are working to incorporate in the proposed budget. And we'll also talk briefly at the end about the potential impact of the proposed, uh, reduction to that budget. Um, being that, that information is, is relatively new. We don't have a, a lot of detail on it yet, but we could talk in generalities about where we think it might begin to fall. So, um, I will. Hello? Are you back?
Mike, we can't hear you. Mike, we can't hear you. Are you on mute or? We can see you, we just can't hear you.
Does he realize, is he still talking?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
I think he's trying to get up and running again.
Yeah, I apologize for that. In my, um, move to share my screen, I think I accidentally muted myself. So let me try not to do two things at once. All right, now I'll just move to the, uh, presentation itself. Are you seeing, uh, well, it should be loading right now. Okay, are you able to see that primary asset for Fairfield?
Yes.
Can.
All right, terrific, thank you.
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Um, you think after a year of this, I'd be better at it. Um, so, uh, as, as Ms. Vitale mentioned, and it has been discussed before in, uh, many years leading into this year's budget, um, certainly of any town, it is certainly linked to the, the strength of its school system. The stronger our school system, uh, the greater value people place on the town. And, and this year has, um, certainly proven that point. In the, uh, in the, uh, many opinions expressed about when we should open school, how we should open school, it's been constantly communicated that, um, people are, want their schools back. They see the value that their children have in our schools um, and the importance that the schools bring to their children's lives. So, um, and they, and I, as Ms. Kupchak and I have talked about, and, and both of us have seen, um, many of those people will rightfully say that they're concerned about their, um, the value of their homes, uh, the value of their investment in Fairfield with the schools, um, being in a hybrid model. So it's, it's, it, this year is, is, uh, been a crucible for the continuing of that conversation and it's, it's heightened awareness for, for all of us. So these are essentially the goals of the, of the proposed budget. Um, some of them are unique to this year, but others are longstanding goals of, of the budgets that we try to maintain, um, from one year to the next. Uh, it is about the focus on the well-being of the whole child. This year has certainly highlighted the need to invest and support the social and emotional growth, mental health of all of our students. And you'll see in the budget this year, and we can talk about it later, some of the ways that we're looking to highlight that as well as bring some alignment and consistency across the pre-K-12 level to that support for students. Um, we, you will, we'll talk about briefly tonight in my presentation, but Mr. McCusie's online, Dr. Zavich's online, and they can certainly speak in more detail about the investment we're making in an early literacy program. Uh, every year we put money into early literacy. It's the most crucial academic learning skill that students can have and bring forward. But this year, we're going to look at how we, um, can, uh, better support the needs of the most struggling readers. And in, and in time, our goal would be also to, uh, save the district some funding, uh, from out of, out of district tuition. We will talk about racial equity in this budget. There is a small slice of the budget that is specifically aligned to promoting racial equity. Um, but most of the work that we're doing in racial equity is about changes in curriculum policies and other practices that we have to follow. And if there's interest, we can certainly talk about that today. SRBI is often seen as a main still of addressing the intervention, students who are struggling, but the way we approach it is it really should be about identifying and personalizing the learning for all students so that we can promote all students' growth across the school system. Um, this can be a labor and time-intensive process, but it's really something that has to be done. And in its way, when done well, promotes equity of learning for all students. Highlighted this year and headlined this year, it concerns around air quality. Again, not something new, but something that has become greater in focus this year as a result of the pandemic and the concern with the spread of airborne viruses. And we'll talk about, um, Mr. Papa George is online and he can talk about specifics about how we're planning to address that. And, um, about three years ago, we, uh, had reduced our per pupil expenditures in each of the schools. Um, this year we had committed to the administrators and to the teachers that we were going to bring that money back up. And we'll talk, we can certainly talk about that, but, um, we were concerned, we have been concerned that at the building level, we've been underfunding some of the needs that schools specifically have. Um, and we wanted to restore that funding. And finally, in the kind of, in the big picture of this is, um, the work we're doing to develop a district improvement plan and move forward, um, over the next five years, um, to bring a comprehensive, uh, means of addressing, um, uh, needs across the district in many of the areas. Um, just a brief snapshot of our student demographics. And this is for reference, and I, I will point out that we'll make the, um, PowerPoint available to everybody in a PDF form because later on in the PowerPoint, you'll see there's some, um, clickable links with further information that we want to make sure that all, everybody has. Um, our enrollment projection, always a source of fascination when we present our budgets. Uh, the, uh, elementary is in red, middle in blue, uh, high school in, in the white or the gray. We are looking at, uh, a slight decrease in enrollment, um, in the 21-22 school year that looks to continue in 22-23. And then enrollment begins to rebound back to its current level and then goes back to, um, prior years, uh, levels, um, by the end of the decade. Now again, as we know, um, when we look out four or five years, um, we're talking essentially about children, um, yet to join us. But, um, this is a, this was based on enrollment projections done by Maloney and Brewman this past October, based on our official state, October 1 state enrollment. Um, you'll see that when we talk about potential savings, um, because the, because, uh, any school system is, uh, core funding, uh, the great majority of its funding is driven by enrollment. You'll see the potential for some savings at the high school, um, level coming up by the end of the decade. Um, perhaps a few years prior to that in the middle schools. But certainly at the high school, we'll see some enrollment drop, um, occurring by the end of the 2020s. This, um, again, perhaps one of our.
Dave, can we go back to, can we go back for a second to those enrollment projections? I mean, Mike, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, okay, so it's, this year we're at, where are we at? We're at nine, two, five. So we're down about 50 students next year in the current projections. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yo, you're welcome. Um, this is our, uh, average increase over, uh, past 20 years. And I want to just point out really to highlight the last, uh, three that comes, uh, to the right. 1920, 2021, and, um, and then they proposed 21-22. Because we'll talk about that, uh, that bit more in the next slide, but, but this again, and this of course, we know that back in the, in the early, um, 2000s, a lot of this was about changes that were happening in the district with building reopenings and things like that. Um, and then of course, that bottoming, bottoming out that everybody experienced, um, and then the rebirth or recrowth that we've all, all sought, um, in the ensuing years. So one of the things that we've been, uh, working to, um, to speak to and help folks understand, and Ms. Vitale spoke to this in her introduction, is what happened over the last year in terms of our budget. Um, and as, as everybody on the, in this meeting is well aware, the, the attempt of this, uh, graphic is to demonstrate what, where that kind of, uh, the monies went. We've spoken about the hole, right? The hole that was created in the creation of the non-lapsing account. And we found honestly that that was a struggle to convey even sometimes to ourselves. So, uh, what we've redone is, is we've rekindled, drawn this, this scenario as such with these, um, bar graphs. And, um, if, if you'll take a look at the slide, uh, and you look under 1920, um, that budget, um, essentially became, it was, uh, adopted at 181, 672. Um, in reality, because of the closure, it became a budget of almost 178 million. Um, and then because of the closure, um, 3.6 million and change was, was put into the non-lapsing account. With the MOU, um, agreed to by the Board of Finance and the Board of Education, that that money would be used towards 2021 expenses. So that yellow, um, chunk of money, that 3.6 million now moves over to the 2021, um, chart, uh, middle column. And it supports and is part of the spending that we're using this year. So the, the town approved and we adopted, um, 184.5 million dollar budget, supplemented, supported by that 3.6 million dollars in the non-lapsing account. So the total budget that we're operating under this year is 188, 134. The proposed budget then, um, is 194th, um, million budget. It, it, if you're comparing the blue of the center column to the blue of the last column to the right, it's an increase of the $10 million that people, um, talk about. But again, in reality, what it's an increase of is the 188, uh, million budget that we're actually working with this year. That's not how it's going to show up on the bottom line when we talk about figures in a few slides. Um, but that's what it is. Essentially, it becomes like a three, a 3.8% increase request over what was adopted or used last year. And I'll break that down a little bit. One, one thing to point out, and the next slides will show it as well, is that the majority of the funding for that non-lapsing account, um, came from two areas. One was, um, operations and maintenance, and the other one was transportation. And you'll see as, as a result, that those categories in our proposed budget bear the greatest, um, percent increases. Let me talk first though about some of the enhancements, um, before we get back into the numbers. Um, because I, I think that the danger we'll have is if we only talk about numbers, we're going to lose sight of, of what an educational budget should try to do and always be concerned about. I've said before that, uh, an educational budget is, is really a statement of values, of values that the, um, teachers and administrators put into it, values that the, uh, education, Board of Education applies to it, and then ultimately, uh, it represents the values that the town, uh, places on education as it moves through the, uh, budget approval process. Um, some of the, uh, initiatives or enhancements we're looking to put into this budget reflect the values we have, again, on, um, promoting the, uh, academic and social and emotional health of all of our, um, students. So, um, the first is the Early Literacy Academy. Um, again, Mr. McCusie's on, and Dr. Zavich could speak to this in, in more detail. But, uh, what we're looking to do is, um, improve the identification at an early age and starting next year with, um, can, students in kindergarten of students who struggle with, um, um, serious reading disabilities. We have to get better at identifying those, those, those needs earlier so that we can intervene earlier. Um, and that's part of what we're, um, want to, um, invest in on this. The other part of it though, is the actual remediation intervention efforts that, uh, to train teachers to respond to those, those needs. Uh, we're talking about a small group of students next year to, to learn on essentially so that we can do this, uh, with the goal that over time, we'll expand the group of students, uh, across other grade levels. Um, and that ultimately, we're going to be able to keep those students in school, in our school system. Keeping students in school is, is really the goal of all of our work. Um, we believe that we can provide the best education, that those students should really be part of our school community. The ancillary benefit of course is that we would save outside tuition. Uh, but this is an investment now in, in, um, trying to make a instructional change to better, um, student learning needs and, and improve the capacity of teachers to meet those needs. This is what I would say is an example of a structural change, um, that we're looking to, to make. Uh, and I'm going to come back to that term structural change in a few slides. Now, the elementary social workers, uh, even before the pandemic, our elementary principals have been asking for more support for their students' social and emotional needs. This is, uh, this is an initiative to increase that at the, at most elementary schools. We have two elementary schools right now with full-time social workers. The rest have social workers either four or five days. Uh, we're looking to add one day to each of the school schedules to support, that provide better support for students, um, in the building level. Again, uh, with the idea that if you, um, support these students, they're going to be more accessible to learning and you're going to prevent further issues, um, arising down the road. I will point out here, and it's not noted on the slide, but one of the, uh, budget adjustments that the board made as we, they moved to approval was the inclusion of $25,000 to, um, really conduct a, a study of how we can better align our pre-K-12 social and emotional support system, which we have a number of programs in place. They don't necessarily speak to each other as well as they should. But we want to make sure that students are, we have a common language and supports for kids as they move through the school system um, so that we can be more supportive of their needs as they grow and mature. The teacher residency program again is a small, uh, piece in the budget, um, and Ms. DC's on the line, he could speak to this as well. But essentially this is working with, um, the, um, Capital Regional Education Council and CES and Trumbull to create, uh, to be part of a teacher residency program. We would identify current existing staff who we believe, um, will have the potential to be, um, educators in our school system. These would be staff, uh, staff of color. Uh, we would look to, um, support them with instructional program and a mentor during the course of next year with the idea being that they would, um, come out of this program certified to teach in our school system. This isn't the only way we're looking to increase diversity in our instructional, uh, teaching and, and across the, all of our employment areas. Uh, but this would be one, um, consistent way that we would also be linking up with other districts and other statewide supports. Real quick, we put some money in for teacher stipends. These are not again, big dollar amounts, but these are designed to support, um, student learning and student achievement. Um, the first is, uh, the PMT training. We use physical management training. Uh, we, we, right now, outside contract, um, with all of our paras and staff who work with students of special needs. This is a way to do, interact with those students safely. We want to bring that training in-house. This will reduce costs and also, um, allow us more, um, opportunity during the course of the year as new staff is hired to train them uh, rather than, and so we can put that staff to work, um, more quickly than we currently can do. And at the high school, adding stipends for special education, um, uh, leaders as well as SRBI supports. Our SRBI system, it needs to be, um, improved at the high school level. Uh, we currently have put in positions at, for the core, for core academic areas as, as department leaders at the high school. Um, but our high schools are working hard to better function and sup, as support systems for kids. And these two positions, um, um, are going to help support our, well, will provide more, um, uh, school-wide support for our, uh, head principals and house principals to, to make that happen. Uh, and then finally indoor air quality. Um, again, as I spoke about earlier, this is a continual issue. It's a resurfaced issue. Um, and doctor, um, excuse me, Mr. Papa George is on the, on the line and he could certainly speak to the preventive maintenance program that we're putting in place. To, um, to put this as, as a, we, in many areas of our areas, we move, need to move from reactive to proactive. And this is just one example of how we're planning to do that. Um, I spoke earlier, back to the numbers, but I spoke earlier about the, um, the impact of that non-lapsing account, and you can see it here again, highlighted in yellow. Um, that pointed seven percent in operations and the point six nine percent in, um, transportation. And, and between those two staffing and, and benefits, um, our main budget drivers of our 5.19% um, ask is for almost four and a half percent, 4.48%. You'll see in the other areas, capital, instructional services, tuition and so on. Um, that's only point seven six percent of the budgeted request. And I'll break this out another way, um, on the next slide. Actually, the next two slides. So here, here is a, a side by side of what happened with the non-lapsing. You can see in the column to the, to the left, or I guess another way to look at it is the middle column, in the 21-22 proposal, the increase there in operations and, uh, maintenance and transportation is, adds up to 1.56% of the 5.19. And so, um, when you take that out, if, if this was, if we were not having to, to essentially go back and fill in that hole, if that non-lapsing account had been part of the, um, adopted budget, the actual increase in those two areas, we, 1.17%. Though the difference is 1.39% of, between what, um, is and what could have been if we had not had to do the, um, uh, to do the non-lapsing. And, and again, to echo what Ms. Vitale said, the non-lapsing was the, uh, the absolute right thing to do to support the town, um, and the taxpayers. Last year, it was the absolute right, right thing to do. Without that increase though, our budget ask this year would be 3.76%. Without that non-lapsing, uh, issue having to be addressed. And then finally, um, and I believe this is finally, the last slide. I, we put this slide in, uh, really to highlight where we're looking at, um, with a, a proposed $2 million reduction in our budget. The major areas highlighted in yellow are where we suspect this is going to fall. The major areas highlighted in yellow are where we suspect this is going to fall. And, and I want to, I want to take a moment here just, just to, to, you know, we, I've not been in a position with the Board of Selectmen or Finance or the RTM before to really address this type of budget reduction. So I just want to be really clear about who I am around these types of things so that everybody understands. I'm not one to, I don't, I don't go around like waving false flags or, you know, talking about what could be without, without numbers. So you're not seeing here, for example, a list of potential cuts to programs and staffing and things like that because first of all, it's too early and two, that, that really needs to be reasoned out and discussed among educators before we bring it public. There's a lot of responsibility when you start to talk about those things and it, it shouldn't be indiscriminately used. But I, I do want to say that, that, you know, in, in all the years of myself developing and defending budgets, given that level of a cut, it, a large portion of it will no likely, or most likely fall on staffing. And I, and I say that just as a, as a, if you look at these numbers, there are costs that we have in the other categories that would not necessarily be able to be addressed wholly by a two million dollar reduction. So some of this at some point is going to fall on staffing and, and benefits. And we will do, my commitment every time when this happens is to say, we're going to do all we can to, to keep those types of cuts away from students. But truth be told, there's, there's really no way to guarantee that at this point. And it's unlikely that, that there won't be some type of impact on educational program as a result of this. Again, just speaking from our first impressions and, and, and the amount of work we did in November and December going over the initial budget request to get down to what we, we actually brought forward, we left a lot of things on the table that were really good requests, but we knew we could not fund. So we know how tight the numbers are in all those areas below the, the, the yellow areas. And, and as we know, there's little we can do in transportation. Kids are going to take buses and we have to provide them. And in operation and maintenance, it's just our continual concern that if we underfund our building maintenance and our services and buildings, we're just delaying some large expenses down the road. And I, and I know as, as listening to the Board of Finance over the past couple of years, that that's certainly a rightful concern of the Board of Finance and the town as well. So. And, oh, I did have a few more slides. I apologize for the false lead. Just a couple of things. I, I mentioned before a structural change. I think that's a term that's been, been used a lot and I'm a little leery of it because I'm not sure that we all would agree that what structural change means. So as we've worked on this, in the interest of, of this area of financial stewardship, we talk about a couple of different ways to approach this. One is a structural efficiency. So how might we find operational cost savings? You know, I would put forward the, the literacy academy offers the potential for a structural efficiency. But the other, the other way to look at this is program cuts. And program cuts often happen in the relative ninth, tenth, eleventh hour of a budget deliberation. And they're looking for ways to find, to balance the bottom line, to meet a desired tax increase, those types of things. They're, they're done often around a table without the necessary people involved with the discussion. And their impact isn't necessarily felt immediately or the reverberations of that impact aren't necessarily felt immediately. But, but that is why it, it's our goal always to talk about structural efficiencies so that we can bring the people in prior to the decisions, to have an understanding of how those impacts are going, how those impacts will occur. How we can either address them or at least and, and fix them, or perhaps just address them and say, this is what has to happen. Because some, there are often going to be hard choices because you, you, you can't do it all. But ideally, you would be making these, these things happen prior. And, and I know that the, one of the criticisms we've received is that we did not spend time over the last year doing this. And I understand that. But I would say back that essentially what we've been doing for the past year is trying to keep the, the ship on course. And it's been a daily navigation battle. And a lot of our crew, if you would let me extend the metaphor, have really not been available because they've all been doing the same things in their classrooms and in their buildings. So this is work that, that requires a long-term investment of the, of the district and the staff and it will be part of the district improvement plan. Speaking of structural efficiency though, and on this, this I believe is the last slide, these, these links will, again, we will get this to you, but these links speak to some of the issues and it concerns and work over the district over the past almost twelve years now to address those changes. Links to the prismatic audit from two thousand and ten, follow-up from Dr. Title, Dr. Jones and myself, as well as some cost containment measures that were mentioned in the two thousand and fifteen budget document. That's a link to that as well. So this, this very much is a, an expectation of the district because it is an expectation of the district that, again, we have to, we have to be very cognizant of the community as a whole, not just our students and our parents. And that concludes the presentation. So I will escape from this and get back on screen. So I've got our program executive directors with us this afternoon and we're here to answer questions you might have about the budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anybody want to start and answer?
Yeah, Brenda, did you want to?
Sure. Mr. Cummings, what is the headcount increase in this budget?
Excuse me, Mr. Flynn, do you mean the FTE increase?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Excuse me. Ms. DC, do you have that right there, Doreen?
I do have it. Good, good morning still. I'm Colleen DC. I'm the Executive Director of Personnel and Legal Services. If you have our budget book, let me make sure I'm in the right budget book. Yes, that's on page one forty-seven. That is summarized there. So it's broken down, the budget to budget, and it's broken down by elementary, middle and high school and then also certified and non-certified staff.
Right. What's the total?
The total increase is three point four five for certified staff and point eight five for non-certified staff.
So rough numbers, it's a four-person increase in headcount across the district. Right?
And in total, it's, in total, it's point three five. It's, um.
Okay. Go ahead. Trying to figure it out here because I don't.
Sorry, Tom, did you ask what the percentage increase is?
No, I asked total bodies.
Okay.
Okay. It's a point eight five in the operating budget and there's a reduction in grants. So the net increase is point three five and that's both certified and non-certified.
And certified itself is a three point four five increase, right?
Uh, two point nine five.
It's not what I have here. I'm doing budget to budget. Where am I missing? I've got five point seven five, four point one, three point four, minus nine point eight. In social workers, I get a three point four five.
Okay, three point four five in the operating budget for certified.
Yeah, that's, well, that's what we're worried about. So it's three point four five and certified. Got it. Talk to me, your medical's gone up dramatically, but the first select woman said something yesterday about additional information from the state. I don't know who on the Board of Ed's side is monitoring this, so can somebody speak to it? Please.
I can, Doreen.
Hey, Doreen.
Hi. Yes, we had budgeted a seven percent increase. The state came out with their increase similar to what they did last year. Only last year, they gave us one percentage increase. This year, they broke it down by actives and retirees. So we're in the process of calculating that. It was a four percent on actives and it's something like a thirteen percent on retirees. And because we use a blended rate, we're, we're in the process of calculating that. So yes, there is going to be savings, but at this point in time, I don't know exactly how much.
Well, how many lives are on the actives versus how many lives are on the, on the retirees? Is that a good way to look at it? And when do you anticipate knowing the savings?
We'll know soon.
What's soon?
Within days, within days.
So by the time we vote next week?
Yes.
Okay, so there's some savings there. Curious, just overall, why are we going up three point four five in headcount with fifty students less this year? I know I'm going to hear, you know, locations and stuff like this, but it seems as though, if I go back to the chart that Mr. Cummings had up on student enrollment, it seems as though student enrollment has gone down a fair amount over the last number of years. But our staffing levels have remained, if not constant, higher during that same time period. I'm just curious.
I, I could start that. So I'm just looking at the chart on, again, on one forty-seven.
Could you maybe bring, oh, you're on one forty-seven. Okay, good of that.
I'm just going to cross that and I would ask anybody if, if I ever get something to jump in. But if you look at the classroom level, the, we had at the high school, there's been an increase in the health requirement for students. It's happened over the last couple of years. Last year, we added a, a one point O health teacher at the high school for both high schools. And we have to do that again as that, that class now moves through. They, they essentially doubled the health requirement for students in the, in the new graduation requirements from the state. This will be the last year of that request. But it's, that's a one of it. Point two in the high school is related to, Mr. Kivanna is going to, and we're supporting a change in instructional model for incoming ninth grade students in algebra to provide them some additional academic support. So essentially, what that course is going to go, it's going to go to a double period course and we're going to need instruction for that. Mr. McCusie, you see, you have additional in special ed?
Good morning, everybody. Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Education Programs. In the past several years, we have added additional special education staff to staff our in-district programs. We have brought in an intensive special education support program at the high school. It's called our Impact Program. We have also added an additional social emotional program at the middle school. And currently, we have also a social emotional program at the high school, at the elementary level that we have not had previously. So with that staffing, it included additional para support, some ed trainers and some social workers or psychologists. So that, that adds to that overall FTE number.
Appreciate that. So here's.
Can I, Tom, can I ask a follow-up question?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to piggyback on this. I see the, the actual numbers. Do you have a percentage increase of staff? What it, what that math is? And if you don't have it on the spot, it's just something I'd be curious about. Sorry, Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
I, I can say back of the napkin, it'll be less than one percent if we have just short of a thousand teachers.
Your, your back of the napkin is much more reliable than mine. So thank you. Tom, go ahead and then I'll, I'll jump in.
Thanks. Let me, let me ask another question. What is our enrollment done? Where, can you put that enrollment slide back? Did you have, not an enrollment? Sorry, wrong word. Headcount. What is our headcount done over the last ten years? If we go back to two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve versus, what's our enrollment as, or rather, what's our headcount as compared to that period?
I'm looking to see if we have that in the book, but I don't think we go back in time to the book.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking. I didn't see it either, but.
Actually, Mr. Flynn, there goes back over here, page one thirty-five.
That's enrollment. Where's teacher headcount?
Oh, teacher, the FT, I'm sorry.
FTE.
Yeah. Colleen, Colleen or Doreen, do we have something like that? I know it's not in the book, but do we have something like that we can put together?
No, we can put it together, but there's nothing in the book with historical, other than last year, this year.
And we'll start, Tom.
Go ahead.
Christine, just another point. When you're starting to look going back, that's where it's important to look at where the kids are situated. Because if you have a majority of kids in elementary school, you might have a higher headcount in elementary school. So you're really doing to track how the kids are moving through the district. And that's what kind of comes into not only where the numbers, but where those kids are located.
Can we go back, Mr. Cummings? Can you put, thank you, Christine. Can we go back, Mr. Cummings, and put your presentation back up and go to the budget slide? The, the trend line slide?
Yeah, hold on one sec.
Thank you.
I appreciate your faith in this.
There you go. If you could share your screen, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Just got to bring that back up.
Mike, I have it up. Would you like me to share?
Oh, if you could do it, yeah, because I closed out of it. So go right ahead, Zaki. That'd be great.
So you didn't think I was looking at your slides?
Oh, I never doubted you, Mr. Flynn.
All right. So let's look at the, the increases here, right? The average increase is two point seven percent. The average increase, the six percent, we were opening new schools at that point in time. And our, and if you look at this enrollment slide, just from seven till twelve, we were also increasing our headcount. Here's what I'm trying to get to, right? From school year twenty twelve, ending twenty twelve to the school year ending twenty twenty-two, our enrollment is down nine percent. Nine percent. Now, each year, our budget has gone up during that same period. I'll just use your number by an average of two point seven percent. Well, the enrollment has come down nine percent. And I think when we look at the headcount, we're going to see that it remained flat to higher. Okay, so, so we've got, those are dangerous trends that our headcount and all that, and I agree with Mrs. Vitale, that the, the kids get moved around. There, there's more in elementary school and all that. But we have to adjust our staffing models to account for that. But it's hard to say, keep the same level of staffing models, continue to raise your budget in terms of dollars each year, but be down nine percent in your actual, for lack of a better word, you know, clients, the children. And that's where we kind of run into trouble here. And those are the biggest drivers of your budget. That and your benefits costs, which we know we're going to get some savings on. But well, I don't want to say we know. Mrs. Manzel has, has indicated that she thinks when that, that analysis gets done, we'll have some saving there. But that's truly, when you talk about structural change and you talk about changing the way we operate, tho, those are damaging trend lines. Your, your clients are going down, your cost base is going up and you're allocating more resources. And I understand it's not going to be one for one or even percentage like in, in your staffing versus your, your clients for all the things, the students, for all the things that you were saying, Mr. Cummings, relative to the, the different needs and the changing requirements of the state. But that, that's really when, when we look at quote unquote structural change or operating change. I will also note that it's been quite some time since we did that operating review or that operating audit by an independent third party to look at how we're delivering services and seeing what we might do in an area of. in an area of declining enrollment and how we might manage these expenses. I also, I, I have a little issue with, with the commentary regarding, hey, we understand we need to do it, we didn't get to it this year. I, I think that's very valid, and there's a lot of reasons. And, and by the way, you know, I want to thank everybody on the Board of Education as well as the administration for all their hard work in, in the past year with COVID. It hasn't been easy. I particularly want to call out to the teachers, because I, I, I know a number of them, and, and they've been doing yeoman efforts, whether it be online, or hybrid, or, or live, or all of the above. But I do need to call out the fact that we've been asking for this change for several years. This isn't new. There was a committee formed a number of years ago by the Board of Education that was.
Tom, you're really, you're echoing, so a few of the things you just said broke out.
Okay, thanks. I don't know why I'm echoing. It's not on my side. But thank you, Nance. What I was saying was, I, I take issue with commenting that, hey, we didn't get around to it this year, and that's not meant at you, Mr. Cummings, and, and I was saying how, how hard everybody worked this year. But the other town bodies have been asking for a number of years for the education to look at their cost base, the education administration and management, to look at their cost base, to attack what their structural expenses were, and to look at how we could deliver services more efficiently. In addition, there was a committee put together a number of years ago that I think met maybe three or four times and was quickly disbanded. I, I don't think there was ever any conclusion reached from that committee. So this really isn't a new ask, that, that education be looked at, at how we deliver our services more efficiently, given the trend lines that I was just quoting. So it, it's unfortunate, and, and I understand it, but it's not sustainable. It's just not sustainable to continue to have these types of increases where our enrollment has come down by 9% over that same period.
Mr. Flynn, this is Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education. I'm fine, thank you. How are you? I, I just, just in terms of special education.
Can I interrupt for a minute, because I, I was on mute, and I apologize, but I wanted to respond to, to Mr. Flynn first?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Flynn, and, and I, I would say, I absolutely agree with you about, on your last statement about that this can't continue. You know, I, I think that there's a lot of ways that a school system can become more efficient when they focus best on the, on the, you know, again, I hate to appropriate or misappropriate a term here, but on the NUs or being a student.
Right.
These are those students are. And I think that, that there's practices in the district such as, and, and Mr. McCusie is working hard on doing something like this with the Literacy Academy, for example, about trying to do better for ourselves, and we really need to do a better job investing continually. First of all, we need to focus on fewer things. We need to invest in them over time, and we need to build staff capacity to address those issues that are really focused on student learning outcomes. And, and I will say, as I'm talking about this, I think the equity focus that the district is adopting is a, is a great way to begin to move this work forward. But, but I want to talk about a couple of things that you mentioned. And, and I, I agree that, you know, I, I hope what I, I apologize if anything I said about not getting to it this year came off as.
No, actually, you, you, let me be clear. It, it did not. I understand that. The frustration I have is it's, it, it hasn't been a one-year thing from my perspective. I know what you guys have dealt with. This has been a many-year thing that we've been concerned about on other town bodies, but go, go right ahead.
We, we are absolutely committed to that. I, I will tell you that in, in, when I applied for the position, I, one of my, one of my arguments for me getting the role was this very thing, that I, I, I know we can do a better job at this. But I, I want to go back to a couple of things you, you mentioned. One was the staffing. You know, I think one of the things that the district has to look at, and this is why I caution against program cuts and, and the budget process, because really, when you think about staffing, the elementary model is, is enrollment driven, as you know, and you, that's where you're gonna see the greatest amount of ups and downs over the years. And in over the past number of years, we've seen enrollment, the number of FTE at the elementary level drop in response to the decline in enrollment. It's, it's the most accurate measure of, of that enrollment. And the only thing that can really be done is to address that is to either raise or lower class size limits. The middle school presents a different challenge, because it is a middle school model, not a junior high model. If it was a junior high model, you'd have, you'd have a staffing model similar to, to the high school. You'd have, you'd have enrollment or staffing, excuse me, based on student course selection. You'd, you'd kind of move kids across different grade levels for different courses. We do a little bit of that now, but not as much as we would do under a junior high model. Junior high model would reduce staffing, but the, of course, it would come at the expense of the team, which the town has invested in as a, as a means to support kids in the early adolescent. So it's, it's not to say that that shouldn't be considered, by no means, but I think it, it begs a larger question around not just the academics, but the social emotional health of middle schoolers. And then the high school is very much a course-driven model. We have big high schools, as you know. I think that there is opportunity in the future to look at how we might be able to take what we've learned this year around distance learning and think about how we might be able to combine some of the smaller classes across the two schools, rather than try to run those courses. We might actually be able to even increase our course selection choices for juniors and seniors if we were able to adopt that model, because right now, courses are being cut when the enrollment isn't big enough. But it's possible that between the two of them, we might be able to support some of those more better choices for kids. So that, that's one thing. But again, the, the high school model to some degree is similar to the elementary. The middle school just stands out. So I, I, I only, I bring this up only because they require this, this further conversation we, we really do need to have as a town and as a school system. The, the other thing I would mention is, yes, you're right, the prismatic audit was over 10 years ago. There's been a couple of smaller audits since. I know Mr. McCusie, in his first year here, commissioned, they worked with a special ed audit to look at, to look at staffing levels, and that's work that's been going on in the district since that, that audit was delivered. So smaller efforts. But yeah, we definitely lost ground and speed this year on, on this, this, this work. So thank you.
Yeah, and, and I just think that it might be worthwhile to get that third-party look, and, and you're right, you've always spoken about how you wanted to, to address this. It's just, we can't. Look, nobody's anti-education. Nobody wants to reduce requests in this area. Nobody wants kids negatively impacted, students negatively impacted. But it's just, it's unsustainable at this, at this current level. You just look at the statistics and it just doesn't hold water anymore. And Mr. McCusie, so you got cut off, so please.
Yeah, I, I apologize. Mr. Cummings, I, I apologize for.
Not a problem, Rob. I was on you.
Okay, I, I just wanted to just, just as an FYI for folks, in relation to the, the conversation about overall enrollment compared to special education enrollment in the Fairfield Public Schools, between 2000, between 2011 and 2020, we have increased by 341 students. The number of students with disabilities identified in Fairfield. The state prevalence rate continues to increase. It's at 15.6%. Ours is at 14.2% right now. Our staff is working really hard to try to meet students' needs prior to being identified in need of special education services, which we know are, are, are more costly. I, I just, in terms of the early literacy program, that really came out of looking at how many students are being placed unilaterally or PPT placed at expensive outplacements because of significant reading disabilities. We're actually looking to have a small cohort of students this year, our most, you know, impaired reading students in grades one and two and three, and reallocate staff to work with them, and then hire a coach, a literacy coach to do some professional development and coaching with our staff regarding meeting the needs of those students, and then really expanding that into working with two or three cohorts of general ed teachers. So not only are we meeting the needs of students with IEPs, but we're, you know, improving the quality of general ed tier one instruction to prevent, to prevent potential referrals and identifications for special education. And we're doing that all at a cost of $76,000 in the proposed budget. So we're excited about that, because the cost of just one outplacement is in excess of $60,000 to $65,000, and then if there's transportation included.
Well, Mr. McCusie, that's, thank you for the.
So that's just an example?
No, thank you for the example, and, and, you know, appreciate that and appreciate the innovation. Your, your point just basically confirms my point that I wouldn't expect, when it comes to the staffing model, to see a one-for-one diminution in staff relative to, on a percentage basis, diminution in enrollment, right? So I get what you're saying, but it's still, I'd love to see what the staff numbers are over 10 years versus an enrollment decline of 9%. And I'd love to see what the dollars are, the increase. I have it here. It says it's, you know, 2.7% per year when we're servicing 9% less students. And, and again, there's, there's reasons that that's not gonna go in, in specific concert, but the trend line shouldn't be so dramatically different, where you're having one go down so much and the others go higher so much. We, we will.
Thank you for the discussion. Yeah, no, thank you.
I'd like to actually add to this discussion, because Tom used the expression allocating more resources, and I don't think it's apples to apples, because in terms of enrollment going down, if, if we have the opportunity, we've seen the cost benefit when you talk about social emotional learning. And.
When did I use the word allocation of resources?
You said allocating more resources in terms of, I believe, you were talking about enrollment numbers going down, declining, and yet we were allocating more resources, and that it wasn't on balance. And I'm.
Well, I don't know. Okay, fair enough.
I'm just sort of arguing the point that, you know, when, and Mr. Cummings, I'd like to take a step back and, and thank you and the team, Colleen at Central Office, and Mr. McCusie, and Christine, Ms. DC, sorry, I don't mean to call you by your first name and everyone by their last names. Just the team and Christine and the Board of Ed, you have worked tirelessly over the last year, and, and you're right, when, when things sort of changed in an infectious flash, just days after we, we met around this proverbial table. So I just, I, I want to highlight and applaud you, Mr. Cummings, for your summary of what this, this budget is a reflection of, the total child, that it, it serves the needs of the social emotional growth we've seen, both positively and unfortunately negatively, how kids here have been impacted and just moving forward. Baseline the social emotional growth of teens and, and kids, it's, it's a challenging gauntlet to navigate, certainly now, is in these extraordinary times more so. Your, your work towards early literacy and some of the early identification with targeted enhancements that will undoubtedly give the district savings in the years to come. Racial equality and racial equity and inclusion, that, that as a priority. Again, representing all of Fairfield, clean air quality for our kids, and for the betterment of the environment. These are, I hope, a reminder of the values that we all that are important to so many people who are here in Fairfield, and I just want to thank you for your focus on those issues. A couple of things that I have questions about, and I think in reading comments, and, and I too, as the first select woman did, want to thank the dozens and dozens and dozens of people that we, we heard from in support of the budget as submitted to the first select woman and to the administration in support of that budget. I actually only got one email that was objecting to it, but counter to that, dozens. And then, not to mention, just following some of the discussions on Facebook, and then I had an opportunity to, to attend a grassroots rally, just to listen and learn and really understand where the parents are coming from. And I, I believe that there is a strong outcry to support your budget as submitted. Again, I do think that there's some confusion, or maybe people just don't understand the nuance surrounding a lot of these numbers, and so I would like to ask some questions for clarification. Some I know the answers to, but I think it would be helpful. Specifically around the non-lapsing account, if you could talk about what that means and how it impacts the budget. I'd like to understand, again, some of this for, for the public, what exactly are things that we are obligated to cover? And then where the cushion is. I do think you sell yourself a little short, Mr. Cummings, when you don't talk about some of the programs that will have to be cut, because I think parents need to hear some of that, and, and while I, I don't think anyone will hold you to that, I think it's important to understand what we're talking about. So maybe we could start with those two things, and then, you know, I'll leave space for others if, if they have questions, but I certainly have a few more things to talk about.
Certainly, we can then start with the, the non-lapsing account?
Thank you.
Okay. And I would, I don't know, Ms. Manziel, do you want to start with this?
Okay. The non-lapsing account, which was the 3.6 million, is made up of two components. One is money that was earmarked for COVID, so that's the 2.1 million. That really, we hope, goes away, is, is a non-issue here, really, except for the fact that it, it was savings from last year.
So Mrs. Manziel, when I look at that, and I'm sorry to interrupt, should I say the 3.5 minus, what's the number you just said that was COVID-related?
2.1.
2.1. So what we're talking about is on a go-forward basis here, about 1.4. Is that right?
It's 1.5 that was cut from the budget and moved to the non-lapsing account.
Right, so it's 1.5.
1.5. Dorian, can I just interrupt for one second? And just, Tom, when the Board of Education set up a non-lapsing account with the Board of Finance in our MOU to set up the account, 1.5 of that, they earmarked that to cover operating expenses. You may recall that they reduced the budget last year by 1.5, and then it was done with the knowledge that there would be 1.5 in excess funding from 2019, 2020 to cover those expenses.
Right, so that's, so that's 1.5 was a known budget hole that was put in.
Okay, back to you, Dorian. Sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, in addition to the 1.5, there's just over a million, a million 32,000 that was prepaid for transportation last year, and also cut from the 2021 budget, which is, so that's where the two, two and a half million hole comes from. There's two major pieces of this year's budget that were either prepaid or funded elsewhere that left us that hole. There's no funding in this year's budget for those two items. I hope that helps.
Helped a lot. For me. Nancy did an answer.
Yeah, no, I, again, I think it's just important, because there's a lot of, you know, people just see big numbers or big percentages, and they don't understand the carryover and, and what the implications are. And I just think it's important that we, we spell that out. And now, if you could talk about the amount in the budget submitted in terms of what are the obligations and where the room is, and, and where, you know, if you have to cut, what are we looking at? What, what are some of the things that are in the in the space where there's some room, you know, the wiggle room?
I, I'll, I'll do that. Thank you for that question. So I want to be really cautious in this, because these are, we're a long way from decision-making, and ultimately, the Board of Education will be finalizing the, any reductions to the budget in, in May. We would be bringing them different ideas for them to react to. But if we look at this, when we look at this, we've, as part of the budget building process, we rejected a lot of staffing requests. We turned down, and I'm concerned about the reductions we made in our computer infrastructure, or we're not where we should be on a refresh cycle in terms of personal devices, Chromebooks, PCs, those types of things. We turned down a lot of those requests. We are, where we are is we're tight on transportation, the bus will be with the bus. We are very concerned about any further reductions in maintenance. This board has really made a commitment based on the experiences. As you know, maintenance is often the thing that happens behind the walls. People don't, you can make budget cuts in maintenance over the years and it causes little disturbance immediately, but you pay for it later on. So we're very hesitant to make any further cuts in maintenance. We have only really one major curriculum initiative that this summer, and that's to catch up the work we need to do to prepare our common assessments for the, to fulfill the graduation requirement and strengthen the instructional program in the district. We've put very little money into curriculum development or program like that this year. One, because we know of the budget awareness. Two, we know that staff will will not really be that available for that work, given the exertions they've put over the past year, year and a half. So really, what it comes down to is staffing and benefits. So a couple of the things that we're looking at. What would happen if we were to employ a junior high model at the middle school, particularly perhaps in seventh and eighth grade? Would we be able to find reductions in staffing there as a result? What would happen at at the elementary if we were to increase class sizes? If we were to go from the current expectation in K2, for example, from 23, but we were to put it up to 25 and and do 3.5 up to 27? What would be the reduction in staffing that would happen as a result of this? As we talked about already this morning, in this meeting, the so much of our staffing is is enrollment driven that in order to modify the staffing level, you have to modify the enrollment levers essentially that trigger those those changes. So those are the things we look at. We probably would have to look at the number of upper level electives we have in our high schools. As I mentioned, we either could try to combine courses across the two high schools with distance learning. Or we might just have to reduce some of those. Those are the, those are the courses that, you know, the upper level APs or the upper level tech courses, family consumer science courses that don't necessarily shrub a lot of enrollment, but they're the courses that gateway kids into careers and college expectations, majors and things like that. So those are, those are things we're looking at.
So. Sorry, can I ask as a, just as a follow up to that point? I've heard discussions of things like social workers and art teachers and and I just want to see where that fits in to this.
Yeah, you know, the supplemental, I don't want, that's a terrible word to use and I apologize. The enrichment type of offerings that I would say.
Please do not use the arts in that way.
No, I'm I'm trying to to give them their their rightful due. And so I would say those, let me say it this way. Those aspects of the core instructional program that some people don't prioritize along with the, say, the science, social studies, math, language.
Fair.
Need to be prioritized along with those, really for the for the benefit of the whole whole student and and for a diverse number of students. We would, we we're pretty much at level of finding those staffing positions as is. So I don't think that they knows necessarily would see unless unless there was some desire to, and and that would not come from from us, to eliminate an entire program, like to eliminate the art program or the mu, you know, these are not things that we would be proposing because those would be wholesale cuts and quite honestly, probably over the top more than, more than, I'm hesitant to even say this, but allowed, but more than what we would need to do. And it would leave, you know, one of the things you always think about when you make a cut is particularly the, you know, the most, the ones that you don't want to do, the painful ones, is how would we bring this back? What would it take to bring something back? And it's far easier to restore something with that already has some FTE or some program resemblance in it than to bring something back from zero. You know, one of the ones that's often been mentioned has been elimination of the elementary world language program. The the students receive Spanish instruction in grades three, four and five. To to reduce something like that could be part of a solution. But once that's that's gone, it's probably gone. And is that something, is that a decision that that we as a school system endorse? When when we say that, you know, budgets are a reflection of values?
And I think that really, Nancy, I think that just to follow up on that and and to follow up on some of the comments about structural change and in terms of what parents need to be just kind of looking at. And when you're talking about staffing models and structural change, I just am going back through some of my notes and I apologize not for having anything on at Central Office due to my Wi Fi being out. But I came across a structural change list that the Finance Committee, which was instituted after the the committee that Mr. Flynn was referencing, the Committee for Operational Effectiveness. Once that disbanded, the Board of Education reinstated the Finance Committee. And one of the first things they looked at was structural change. And over $3 million was identified in just the way that the district operates in savings per year. And it, things on there range from bringing the impact program for special ed in house, moving to the Chromebooks to save money on paper resources, 20 hours weekly dedicated to residency investigations, bringing legal in house, Ms. D C, merging our preschool with our ECC into one model. Over the years, going to a full day kindergarten. Our CLCs brings cost avoidance, increases staff, but costs also go away with that. Which is why you really, when you're looking at FTEs, it's important to to dig deeper. You know, if you're adding teachers to provide specialized services to children with special needs, you're potentially avoiding costs. And these are all things that have happened since the last operational audit and are ongoing. As Mr. Cummings said, in terms of the continuing work as we begin the district's improvement plan, these conversations are going to be instrumental in moving forward. But keeping it real, I think for structural change, it's been, it's been talked about over and over again over the years. And I think that people need to understand that that might mean increasing class sizes. It might mean going to a junior high school model. It might mean doing away with the house system. Those are things that were brought up in the last operational audit that were not moved forward by past superintendents in part because it didn't seem to be offering the cost savings originally presented through Prismatic. And also, it really didn't necessarily meet the needs of our students.
So Mrs. Vitale, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Can I ask a question? It's Tom. Yeah, thank you. So based on what you just said, what that implies is all this stuff has been done and our cost base has continued to go up at this rate and our headcount has continued to stay or grow while our enrollment has gone down 9%. Is that right?
And again, I I think that.
Because that that's a heck of a.
This.
That's a heck of a problem.
This is stuff has been done and has been ongoing. And I just wanted to share that just because there has been some talk that the school district over over the years has been called on to look at structural changes and to make it seem that that work has not been done to some extent, isn't exactly accurate because it is ongoing. And that we are seeing changes.
So what would the rate have been?
I think you do need to look at where the students are, what their needs are and where the students are.
So what would the rate of increase have been without those items? I'm sorry to interrupt. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, and I don't, I don't have, going back what the rate of increase would have been because we would have possibly been making different decisions at the time. Some of those rate of increases over the last five years at least, we recommitted. I know since I was on the board, recommitted to investing in maintenance.
So we didn't get the savings.
Put on whole, putting things in like preventance, maintenance programs. So we get ahead of some of these problems. So little problems don't turn into bigger, more costly problems.
So we didn't get the savings?
No, we did get the, we did get the state, we did get some savings.
We just said we reinvested.
Maybe the increases would have been higher.
That's what I'm saying. Your, your, I mean, that's alarming.
They would have been higher.
Yeah, that's alarming.
This is Rob Mancusi again. I just want to, Special Education Director, I just want to give an example of structural efficiency. We did, Mrs. Vitale mentioned that we have our impact program at the high school, which is our social emotional support program for our up to 50 high school students at Ludlow Ward and Walter Fitzgerald. Just an annual savings and each year student needs change because kids, each kid is different. So we're not always comparing apples to apples when you're talking about students with disabilities ever at, actually. But the cost of running the impact program versus having had contracted the service previously, it is saving actually $78,000 a year. It costs us, you know, approximately $535,000 a year to run that program. And we had a contract for $613,000 a year prior to that. So we are in year three of impact. So you can just do the math, 78,000 times three. That has, that is an actual savings had we kept that contract that we would not have had.
Got it, thank you. And Mrs. Vitale, my apologies for interrupting you.
Okay, I'm going to jump in if I could. So I just want to go back to what we were originally talking about earlier in the budget book, Mrs. Manziel. You said that you you reduced the amount for the health insurance in the budget book. But in the budget book, it's 11.25%, which constitutes $2,913,414. So, you know, we've been also checking with the state and and to your point, it's down 4% for active employees and 12% for retirees. Can you do, have you done the math since you've gotten that information and tell us how much is reduced in that line item?
No, I can't. We are working on that. Yes, we we received that information of the 4% and the 12%, but it's not as easy as applying those percentages to those categories because we use a blended rate. We have to blend the the different rates that the state gives us for retirees and active staff into a blended rate based on headcount. So we're in the process of doing that.
So when will you have that number?
Hopefully within a few days.
Okay, because that's, I think that's really important for the board's discussion purposes. Obviously, we're voting on this on Monday and that is a very big number, $3 million and has a huge impact on the budget. So that number is vitally important for us to have as we move forward. I I also want to talk a little bit about some of the things that I learned over the summer, you know, just being in this position and some of the things that we were able to do to assist the Board of Ed during the pandemic and with purchasing. So I know that a lot of this discussion has been revolving around cutting programs and changing the models at the middle school, which I don't believe we have to do any of those things. I think we just need to have tighter control on our purchasing and and other issues too, and and structural changes, issues that as we have talked about. And as Mr. Flynn indicated, has been discussed by other boards in the past. So for example, I just want to give two examples. You know, during the summer, we we reached out because everything flows through our purchasing department. And I asked my C O, Tom Bremmer, to work with the Education Department to assist with some purchasing items. And we were in late off August, you know, reached out to by the Board of Ed Superintendent Angeles to purchase tents before the kids went back to school. And it was a rush job, it had to be done. And the and the idea was to rent tents. And so just really a couple of phone calls by my administration and we were able to assist with saving a significant amount of money. $194,000 for that. So we were also asked to assist with these shields that were purchased for their, for the school system as well. A few phone calls and we were able to save a significant amount of money. 109, $109,000. So together, those just two items, just two purchasing items in a sea of literally thousands of things that are purchased, thousands of things that are purchased by the Board of Education. We were able to save $300,000 just by making a few phone calls and getting a better deal. So these are the kinds of things that I'm talking about. I'm doing this every single day on behalf of the town, doing all of this hard work, the phone calls and really making sure that we are getting the best bang for our buck, that we are getting the best cost for the things that we purchase. Because this is, this is real life. These are, this is people's money. This is what we would all do in our own household. Whenever we purchase something, we check, we check a ton of different places to see what's the best cost. Is it the best value? Is it something that's worth purchasing, my harder dollars on? And so all I'm saying is two items, $300,000. Think about that. If we were to do that with every single item, I I think we would save more than $2 million, a whole lot more. So I think the discussion doesn't really always have to be about all these horrible things that are going to happen. We're going to cut programs and art and music and collapse the junior high school model. I don't think that's where the discussion needs to be at all. I think we just need to put tighter control on our purchasing. And I do believe, and I would like to help, work with the superintendent on an educational audit. As Mr. Flynn talked about, a third party just coming in and looking at how we're doing things and give us feedback. That is, that is a good thing for both of us. It doesn't have to be an adversarial discussion because the more money we save on things like this, $300,000, what would have that done for special ed? What would have that done for our educational program? So what I'm saying is that I think that we need to start talking a little bit more with one another and working together because it's not two budgets, it's all one budget and it all comes from one place. Every person in this town who works really hard to earn a living and has had a really difficult time over this past year with this pandemic. So that's, that's really all I wanted to say on that piece of it.
And I.
And I'll open it up. And I'd like, if if we could, as we move forward with the rest of the meeting, could you wait for me to sort of call on people so we're not just having like a conversation? We're sort of a little bit more like, you know, professional in our meeting. Because you know how it goes, we're all talking and, you know, meetings could go like till 10 o'clock tonight. So I'm I'm going to open it up to the board now. Nancy, would you like to?
Yes, and, you know, thank you for your comments. I would love to hear Angeles's response to what you're saying about the two purchases that you just referred to. I completely appreciate that perspective. They they feel like because they are outlying pandemic related expenses. I'd be curious to hear Angeles's response for, to to your comment.
Actually, I I can, I can respond to that for Mr. Popgeorge because he's, he's talked to me about this. And I I want to be, again, my coming superintendent, I I very much respect. I want to be really careful how I say this because I by no means are my diminishing the contributions of Mr. Foley in purchasing to our work and we we work hand in hand with him throughout, he's the best of years. But I I think there's a couple of things, points to be made. One, the person who did the purchasing for us in in district left us in early August and we had only just now had the ability to refill that position. So we've been without a purchasing person on our end who would normally take care of many of these things. And and Mr. Foley has ably filled in that role. But I I think, and Mr. Popgeorge could probably better speak to the the desk dividers than I can. But in terms of the tents, Mr. Popgeorge and I were having that conversation back in August. And we initially thought of purchasing them. We thought that it would probably be a better investment to purchase them because we knew that we would need them in the spring and we potentially need them, or excuse me, in the fall, we would need them again in the spring. And one of the questions we were kind of internally having was where are we going to store them over the course of the winter? But that was the conversation we had and then he began to work with the town. And I think the town talked about renting them. There was this back and forth, natural conversation. It wasn't by any means. I don't want anybody to have the impression that this was adversarial, this was just people working together to solve a problem. Well, it would be better to rent, buy, and ultimately we decided to buy. But I, again, I don't want to take anything away from the town side of this, but we were open to purchasing at first and then, you know, open to the discussion of renting. I mean, it was just part of the decision-making process. And I don't know, Mr. Popovich, if you have more to add around the the desk dividers, I know that that was, I think similar, but if you want to speak to that.
I can just, yeah, real briefly, the desk dividers that we ended up purchasing. Yes, we did, as you mentioned, we were short a purchasing person over the summer and as the school started until now. But one of the things we did when we were looking at purchasing the desk dividers is we went, as past practices told us, we went to the state bid list. We found companies that were on the bid list. We we requested pricing from them so that we could follow the protocols because we knew it was going to be over three thousand dollars. So we knew using someone on the state bid list would be the best option to move this process along. That being said, thank, and we thanked the purchasing department. They reached out to some other contractors not on the bid list and were able to get some better pricing, which was stuff at the time we were not able to do because it was over three thousand dollars. We we were working on any pressure. We would have had to put something like out out to bid. We wouldn't just be able to use a company that wasn't on state list and did not have a state contract and did not have a town contract. So we were, we were trying to work within the parameters that we were set with. And we're unaware that we could go outside of those parameters at the town, at the time, I should say. So again, we do work with the town very closely. Mr. Foley is a great resource for the town and for us. We worked very closely with him through this whole pandemic.
Yeah, yes. And thank you, Angeles. I appreciate that. And I, and again, to 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 agree with Mr. Cummings, yes, we've worked well together. We should continue to do so. I just want to point out that in my budget and as part of the reorganization of town government, we are adding buyer to the purchasing department because we want to do this more thorough investigation of all purchases and to also comply with the B P W audit to make sure we don't have any issues. But we are, we stand ready. And as I said to you last year, my, you know, I stand ready to work with you to find savings that do not impact our students. And I believe, I truly believe in my heart that we can do that. I I believe we can do that. And I think, you know, a discussion a little bit closer about looking at some third party to assist us with some of these things, I think would even, I think would just be beneficial all the way around. And I know you care about this too. Mr. Cummings, I know you care about this, savings and making sure most of the money goes directly to our students for the best educational opportunity for each and every one of them. So, you know, I I hope we can continue to do just that, work together.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Chris, thank you. Just as a question for you, actually, Madam First-Electwoman. I'm curious how you came up, I understand, looking for savings. I'm curious how you came up with the two million number as a reduction to the submitted budget? Or was it based on a percentage?
Yeah, well, it was a lot of things, Nancy. I mean, we spent quite a bit of time trying to even out, you know, obviously, the first few, the first priorities were to pay back the debt and the cliffs that we, that were created in budget last year and to make sure our town stays on financial firm footing. So there was a lot of, you know, a lot of meetings in this conference room trying to figure it out. And frankly, without the growth that the town saw through this revaluation, which came pretty much three, after three quarters of the budget work was done, we would have had even a higher, I mean, the tax increase would have been off the chart. And so the the cuts all the way around would have been much larger. So I came up with several reasons. I believe that two million dollars can be absorbed in ways that do not impact the students. I truly do believe that. And also, I don't believe that we could have passed a tax increase higher than two percent in this economic environment. So those are partially the reasons that we looked closely at it. And listen, I served on the Board of Ed for six years. I I I studied budgets for six years as a Board of Education member. And I think based on that experience and knowledge and and time, that two million dollar cut is less than one percent of that total budget. And I don't, I just can't, I don't believe that that impacts students directly, that there are ways to get there without doing, without doing anything draconian, for example, to students. Oh, I'm sorry, Christine.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kupchak, for that. And for your, from your perspective, it was valuable to hear where you were coming from on that. But I do want to just go back to what you're saying is somewhat different than what Mr. Flynn is saying in terms of calling for structural change and looking at the staffing model. And I just want to swing back for that to make one point, just in terms of, again, that right now we're seeing our numbers in high school, our high school enrollment is higher, and it just costs more to educate a high school student. And I think that's just important to keep in mind as you're factoring in what what is going into this budget. And I will, I will stop on, just want to tail, tail into, tail into that, and I will stop on that.
Can I?
I just jump in for a second. I know, Christine, that's a fair point. And I I don't think, I I look for structural change too. But again, I I'm the leader of the town. I I'm not an educational expert. That's a superintendent's job and his staff to figure out how how to run the school system, right? So it's it's my job to crack the budget that that addresses the entire town and and has to hit a lot of different benchmarks. And it's not easy. It's hard. And then put it forward. It's it's superintendent's job to figure out how to man take that budget and deliver the services to the students. I can't tell you, you know, what to do with the high school or what to do with the elementary. That's not my job. Even when I was on the Board of Ed, I never thought it was my job to tell the superintendent how to run the school system. And I think Mr. Flynn is pointing out structural change. Listen, this is something that is, I think, important. It can mean a lot of things. And just it can mean something different to Mr. Flynn than it means to me. But I think we could all, we could all look to do things a little bit differently. I've been doing that the last with my reorg, and I'm hearing a lot of pushback, you know, whoa, what are you doing? And whoa, what's happening? And I say, you know, you don't know if you can make changes unless you try. You've got to at least try. And so I'm just asking, and I think that's what Mr. Flynn is doing. I'm not going to speak for him. We're just trying to see if we can do things a little differently so that we can get our costs under control because they are really rising quite high.
There's, there's two comments on that. And thank you, Mrs. Kupchak. And Mrs. Vitale, thank you for the, thank you for the the comments back. I think there, there is a two-pronged approach here. First of all, I think Mrs. Kupchak's right as regards just better purchasing practices and better coordination between the town and the Board of Education to come up with a creative solution such as the tents and the dividers, number one. Number two, this isn't a one-year issue. So even when we go through that, it's incumbent upon all of us as elected officials to make sure that the taxpayer money is spent efficiently. And that we have the most efficient and effective school system that we can afford. And so when I speak to structural change, I'm speaking to the fact that we can't just look at this as a one-year problem. Because as we've seen, and as the trend line indicates over the last ten years, this is a mid to long-term problem that as a, as leaders of the town, we need to address on behalf of both the students and the taxpayers. So it is right. I am calling for a review. I would not say that I'm in a position to say what the answer should be. But I do know what the question should be. And I do feel I've got a pulse on what the town, I think we've got a pulse on what the town can afford. So I think that that's why I'm calling for this mid to long-term review as well as that operating audit, as well as looking at all your models. I didn't single out staffing. I pointed out the inconsistency in the growth there versus the decline in your enrollment. So that's what I'm asking for. So thank you for the opportunity to clarify and respond back.
I'd also, may I add a comment?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Nancy.
And and thank you. And I feel that I need to push back slightly respectfully to to the both of you here. Tom, you just used the phrase, we're not in a position to say. And Brenda, you said you're not an expert in this area. We have hired the people that are. The superintendent has done so with his team and with the Board of Ed. And I, I'm uncomfortable painting a picture of the Board of Ed where it's, it's stating that they're not, you know, rigorously engaging and being thoughtful about how they are spending our money. I think that's a, it's a dangerous thing to do. And I, I think that we have to trust, or I would say that I know many people in this community trust them to understand, trust the Board of Ed and trust the superintendent and trust the team at Central Office to understand that any wasted dollar is not going towards the kids, which is the driver. So I just want to push back slightly because while we do, it is in our purview to ask questions and to challenge and to stretch, I think we also have gotten answers from experts who believe that the budget submitted is exactly what needs to happen to to deliver in the most efficient way. And it's not to say we can't do better, but I I believe that the superintendent has put the, put the proposed budget that was recommended by the Board of Ed through that lens, a lens of rigor and efficiency. And again, I I hear you saying, Mr. Cummings, that you are open and you're open to new ways. And I have found that to be the case. You know, I have a dream of of getting together little groups after the fact with, that includes students and parents and teachers and a member of the R T M. And and you can do ten, ten round tables of ten people for input. Because I know that you are open to finding creative ways. But again, I just go back to this idea that I am personally not comfortable painting a picture where you have not stretched this budget through that lens of rigor and efficiency. So I just wanted to to push back slightly and and make that comment.
Can I?
Tom, did you want to say something?
If I can, but I'll wait for you if you want to go first.
No, that's fine.
All right. Hey, Nancy, thanks for the comments. Absolutely, I am not an expert in education. I am and have thirty years' experience with economic models, though. And I can tell you when an economic model isn't working. And this economic model is not working as efficiently as it needs to for the taxpayers and for the students. You know, the the difference is, everybody wants the best school system. That's true. But in reality, and where we come in, is we want the best school system that the town can afford. And it's that lever of affordability that needs to be addressed. I wouldn't presume to go into a classroom or tell Mr. Cummings what the best educational model is. But we do have to look at it through the prism. It's our job to look at it through the prism as can the town continue to afford this level of growth? And that's where our role and our oversight comes in, in my opinion. So I thank you for the comment. And again, I thank the administration and the Board of Education for all their hard work.
Absolutely. And I would like to just say that as well. You know, I I obviously, running a town during a pandemic, and Nancy's right, literally this time last year, we passed a budget and the next day we were dealing with a global pandemic. And so it was, this has been a hell of a year. And I mean, honestly, I look at Mr. Cummings and all the hard work he has done. I mean, I, we spent a lot of days and nights talking to each other, consoling each other, really. That our, our dumb luck of being leaders during this time, right? But everybody, the, the staff, the teachers, I mean, the teachers have gone above and beyond. And I've talked to so many, I mean, the amazing amount of extra work they've had to do is stunning, really. It's stunning. And I'm just hoping that next year it's going to be so much better. And I'm excited for our kids to get back into their classrooms next week. I think that is going to be huge for families, for those kids. And I think it's going to have a huge impact on their social, emotional well-being. Just being back to school, being back to normal. They just can be, I'm so excited about it. I can't wait for them to be back. And I just want to note that we have ten minutes till our break at one. Then we're only taking a thirty-minute break and then we'll be reconvening back at one thirty. So I just want to mention that. Christine, did you want to say something? Sure, I'm sorry.
I did. Really to Ms. Levkowitz's point about just bringing together the stakeholders. And I think that that will be important work as part of the district improvement plan. That was really our focus, what was going to be our focus for this year, as I said in the beginning. And the pandemic really has taken, you know, mu- much, most of our energy, if not all, and then some. But, you know, I, and to Mr. Flynn's point also, I think that hearing all of these voices together and getting people together will really move our town forward and our school district forward. And in terms of the Mr. Flynn's opinion, in terms of affordability and what our school district will look like, I I respect. I respect his expertise and his years of experience. And he's looking at it through one lens. And I just really wanted those listening what that lens might mean for our school district moving forward. And we'll have those discussions and they will work into our district improvement plan. The Board of Education, the Finance Committee is going to be looking at the structural change. As we saw today, I think getting a definition of what it actually means, so we're all speaking the same language, would be productive moving forward as we continue to do this work. So thank you, Ms. Levkowitz, for, for sharing your, your point of view on that. And look forward to possibly having you around the table.
I, I welcome the
to have discussions.
I welcome the opportunity. And may I, as a follow-up?
Sure, go ahead.
Tom, I have great respect for your, your years of financial acumen and experience. I rely on it. I I wanted to say, however, and reiterate a point, that there are other factors here and
Without a doubt.
Yeah, and our students, you know, it doesn't fit neatly into, you know, I say this, it sounds glib, they're not an economic model. You know, there's so many other intangible things that we need to factor in. And we've seen that, you know, in the last year, very specifically with the social, emotional needs that our, our kids have. Before that, in, you know, with the mass shootings and and a lot of the the supports and and what has become a reality for our kids in terms of the things that they go to school now and have to contend with. So I I would just encourage us not just to look at something I said yesterday, not just to look at the specific line items, although obviously crucial, important. But there is also an equal an equal metric by which we need to be evaluating the budget. And I think Mr. Cummings highlighted some of those things so beautifully in his opening remarks about the things that we are focused on. And again, I I just, the early literacy, the racial equality, the air quality, racial equality and air quality. So, you know, again, as a return to values, I think it's really hard sometimes to to do dollar for dollar. It's not, it's not equal, equal measure. So I just wanted to reiterate that point.
Thank you, Nancy.
Christine, do you want to comment again?
I know that we're heading into lunch, so I'm gonna, maybe, maybe this will be the last come before lunch, just as we're talking about enrollment. I think that we can celebrate the fact that even during a pandemic, Fairfield is a desirable place to live and to come and eat and to shop and to work, as we heard yesterday, just in terms of the positive impact of all these home sales are having on our local economy and our budget. That's something to celebrate. I know just from looking at some of the enrollment projections, Dr. Parrish has reported to us that we're getting new enrollments, new students coming in mid-year. So I am, I'm kind of looking forward to these enrollment projections protect, potentially being wrong and that we have more students than projected. And I would caution just especially about the kindergarten class. I think that we're going to see a bubble next year. Something else just to keep in mind when looking at the numbers. Some people waited, I think, being that we're in the midst of the pandemic, just to have their kids start in public school. So just be prepared for that as we have these discussions moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess we could break now if there's no things further that anybody wants to So, um, I guess we could break now if there's no things further that anybody wants to add. And then I, we will reconvene back at 1:30.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Ms. Kupchak, do you want, I'm sorry, did you direct, you want us all back at that point?
I, I would just leave it on if you would like. I mean, I'm just going to leave ours on and put it on mute. Because I don't want to sign back in.
No, but should they, are we going to continue with the Board of Education discussion after lunch, I think is the question, right?
Um, well, that's, oh, that's actually a good question.
Well, respectfully, I'd love to have just a, a, the half hour to kind of reflect on what we talked about to see if there are any outstanding questions, if I may, Madam First-Electwoman.
Sure, absolutely, Nancy.
Sorry, all. I know you've given a lot of time, but I just-
We'll, we'll all find something to do, but if, if, this is our priority today. So absolutely, I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, Dave Kelly or, I mean, um, Jerry, could you stop recording us?
Do, do we need to move to go to lunch or?
No, I think it's just a break. I don't know if we have to.
Okay. Thank you.